Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting for November 28th, 2022. There's Sherri. We were just ready to replace you, Sherri.
Should I go out again?
I was just gonna say, can't get that lucky, though. It's not gonna happen. So now that we have, everybody is present, we will open the meeting with a roll call. Sherri Quirk.
Here.
Mike Deftis. Jane Gleason.
Here.
Sam Corbett.
Here.
Carl Schultz.
Here.
And Michael King. The chair is here, so we have a full board. Preliminary business, the approval of the meeting minutes of November 14, 2022. They are quite lengthy. Carl had a list of concerns, so I will revert to Carl for just a quick summary.
See if anybody else had anything.
Carl, I'm sorry, I didn't look at your notes, but I had some as well. Maybe there's some overlap, but essentially what I flagged were some references that should have been to interconnection agreements or interconnection that were misstated as...
Internet connections.
Internet connections, yeah.
Yeah, I caught that one, too.
I didn't catch those, so...
And then there was another passage referencing a person who made a statement that was not intelligible, and I'm concerned that that part of the record may not be preserved in the minutes. And I guess would ask this board what one does when, in these circumstances where someone makes a statement and it's not captured in the minutes. I assume we can listen to the tape and see if we can get the remarks so that the record is complete.
I did review, I did review the tape, the entire tape of the last meeting. It's intelligible throughout, so if somebody made a statement that was garbled, I think we could recapture it.
Okay, good.
But I think we need to point the person doing the minutes to where those gaps exist. So, as Mr. Chairman King pointed out, I pointed out a couple of places where entire sections of testimony were not included in the record. On Bay Point, there was a person who spoke at length. It wasn't even listed as having spoken. I think, at least it needs to be captured. I think the summary of interactions with Attorney Clavens about what things we were looking for on the Zero Route 25 wasn't itemized as well as it could have been. Ms. McHale's name was misspelled, so I fixed that. You could smile, Nancy, I would. So, yeah, I think, I think we need to work with the scribe and try and make some improvements.
Yeah, I agree.
Ken, how is it, I summarized some of mine, I could do better. How is it best to get that back?
I think the summary is probably the best, because we don't want actually verbatim minutes either, because that takes too much time and it takes too much paper and effort to create. I don't have the funds to have somebody transcribe the meeting minutes in a verbatim fashion, but if something can be summarized and put into the notes, into the minutes, then that's probably the best way to do it.
Okay. I'm particularly concerned about, and I think I'm gonna use Ms. Quirk's words, the public record, because as you know, I tend to go back even sometimes years trying to understand things before us, and I can't always figure that out from the minutes. So the record needs to be complete and clear enough so that we can figure out what was agreed to.
I disagree. It's not a transcript, it's minutes. I reviewed four committees, and they're a couple pages. And they're not supposed to be a transcript.
On the other hand, this is the record that we have to submit if there's an adjudication to substantiate any decision we make. And I don't believe what we have in some of these items would substantiate and defend our position.
So is it accurate that we can't go to a taped meeting if we needed to bring it to a courtroom?
The tape is not the official document.
But what Kyle's concerned is, is the official document, the approved minutes.
Right, but in fact, I don't think the judge is necessarily gonna look at what everybody from the public says in terms of information that they provide.
I would agree...
I'm not saying verbatim transcript of what the public says, but we need to be clear on key statements that are made.
Yeah. And I do agree with Sam. I don't think it should be a word by word, because you're right, it would take forever and a day to get these done. But, you know, just in his bullet list for Zero Route 25, none of Mr. Cosgrove's testimony was captured at all. There should be something.
There should be something there, yeah, yeah.
He came before us and he made a statement, you know, whether it be just a quick summary of what his point was or a little more detailed, but in this case, there's nothing.
Right, there's something, he was up there, he was saying something.
So I think if we go back to the person that's creating the minutes for us and just maybe hit on these bullet points and say, you know, we don't need a word by word, but we do need a little bit more detail so that should anything go to court, and we do need to back up our decision-making, that it's there.
Right, I agree.
Okay.
All right, well, I will improve the comments that I sent back to, I don't know who the young lady's name.
Patty is her name.
Patty. And Sherri, if you wanna send your comments.
I'll do the same.
Okay.
I think that'll be sufficient.
So, having that discussion, I would entertain a motion that we do not approve the meeting minutes on November 14th as presented, that we return them to the scriptener with our bullet points, go over what it is we feel needs to be on the minutes, and then get a revised copy for approval at a future meeting. I need a motion.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Jane Gleason, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Next up, 150 to Honet Road, and can we talk about these two together, because there's a little wrinkle in the ointment on this one? So, there was some discussion, 150 to Honet Road and 27 Charge Pond Road, there was some discussion that there was a little confusion in the planning board office and that these were not posted in the Wareham Weekly. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
So by rights, we really can't discuss these tonight, because there wasn't notification of such meeting.
I don't think that's the case. Although the board thought that was appropriate, it isn't necessarily part of the process for extension of a permit. Extension of a permit is a different process and doesn't require a public hearing.
Okay. Was it listed anywhere? Was it on the town website?
Yeah, it was posted on the agenda.
So it was posted on the town website for the upcoming agenda?
Right.
Mr. Chairman, through you, to Mr. Buckland. I understand that we could discuss it. Can we take public comment if it's not a public hearing and accept records and artifacts?
Yes, you can. That's something up to the chairman as to what he wants to accomplish at the meeting.
Okay.
Is there someone here to speak to 150 to Honet Road tonight? I do see some people in the audience that are here as a result of this, aside from the proponents, so it's obvious that it was posted someplace that was publicly accessible. So I think we'll move forward with it. Sir?
Yeah, good evening. Jared Connell with New Leaf Energy. I was here, I think, tail end of October for one of your meetings with my colleague, Dean Smith, who is on his way here right now, I understand, but has held up some traffic on 495. Greg Sampson is also here with me tonight. He's from Wumble Bond and Dickinson. He helped us compile and distribute some of the materials that you folks had requested or expressed an interest in at the last meeting. So we submitted a letter a week or so ago for three or four of the items, again, that you had requested or expressed an interest in, that include some more details on the decommissioning bond that you folks had asked for, some information on the solar panels and modules themselves, and PFAS. Somebody had said that you wanted to look up your conservation commission order of conditions, so we included those in the attachment. And there was also somebody that asked about the group studies from Eversource, so we provided some information about the open DPU dockets there, about how the group studies have been conducted, and some of the proposals for the cost allocation for the upgrades.
And when were these documents submitted?
November 17th.
November 17th. Ken, did the office receive these? Because I don't see them up on the site.
I couldn't find them in my email trail as of November 17th, but they could have been sent to Sonia.
I'm assuming you sent all this information for 27 Charge Pond Road, too?
Yeah, there was encompassing of both projects, yeah.
Perfect. Yeah.
I can, I have hard copies if you'd like them tonight. I apologize that the electronics didn't make it.
I would like, I don't think we can, we can, well, I'm not ready to, well, whatever.
Yeah, no, if you've got hard copies...
We didn't get it. The point is, I don't think any of us saw it.
No.
Nope.
I definitely didn't see it.
If the board would, I'm happy to distribute these, and then I could just...
That's fine.
Give a quick summary if that would work.
Yep.
Thank you for responding.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, my name is Greg Sampson with Wumble Bond Dickinson. So I just started out the letter basically mentioning that we're happy to provide the information, but the real determining factor is if, you know, the extensions should be granted under Section 9 of 40A if there's good cause, and that's a legal standard. So the DPU group study is the basis for our good cause. It's certainly been outside of our hands, and that group study has been, you know, shown as good cause for extensions across many of the places in the southeast where the interconnections are being held up. Excuse me. That being said, we are happy to provide some of the information. One of the questions was regarding PFAS. We provided the specs for the solar modules we used, and there's no PFAS in those. There's also a bulletin from the Michigan State University that discusses PFAS and solar modules, and their research showed that it's not customarily used in solar modules. We provided copies of the conservation order of conditions for both projects. The plans that were approved under the orders of conditions were the same as the ones that were approved by the planning board, so there's no inconsistencies between those. We did provide more information about the Eversource group study and the timing, including the timeline as to when that was initiated and the reason why it's been held up. There is progress on that group study. We've seen some of the, the costs have been sent out to the participants in the study, and now they're in the feedback loop, and Jared can clearly answer more questions on that than I can. And the last is the decommissioning. There's some concerns that the decommissioning estimate didn't take into account some battery storage and the full cost of disposal. So we did check both projects and confirm that all of the factors that are customarily included in decommissioning were taken into consideration. We recognize the, your order, your special permit requires that decommissioning bond be updated periodically. We suggested that, you know, given the timeline of when the project was approved and the time we start construction, it might be best to have that decommissioning estimate updated when we pull the building permit, when we go to operation, and then every five years thereafter. It just seemed like those were the appropriate milestones in the process, so you would have that comfort as to where, you know, that amounts are carried forward at the right periods of time. So that's the summary of the letter. The technical, the appendices include the technical spec sheets for the solar modules, the Michigan State bulletin, the orders of conditions. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We just do want to reiterate that, you know, we do feel that the reason why the substantial use has not commenced is for good reason, and that's the group study. So we appreciate your consideration.
Flipping through the pages real quick, I don't see a, unless I'm just overlooking it, I don't see a revised decommissioning plan.
We didn't decommission, we didn't update the estimate at this point, because we thought it would be best when we go to pull a building permit.
I would disagree. I would think that for the towns, health, safety, and welfare, we would want to know right up front what the decommissioning is going to be. Especially for me, the whole, the whole subject of decommissioning is evolving quickly. There's red flags concerning recycling, the ability to recycle, what's gonna happen with product that can't be recycled. And quite frankly, after reading, I read an excellent paper prepared by an attorney describing the goings-on of the solar industry in Charlton here in Massachusetts, and I think they have 20-plus arrays in their town right now. And based on all of the information that I read, it looks to me like the decommissioning is a hot-button topic, that we're vastly underestimating the cost of decommissioning these things. So personally, for me, sooner better than later. I don't wanna, I don't wanna say, yeah, we'll, we'll give you an extension and everything will be great, and you'll get a building permit, and then we'll look at your decommissioning plan.
So just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I didn't mean to interrupt. There was a decommissioning estimate provided at the time we got our approvals.
That was two years ago.
Yeah, okay.
What has happened in two years?
And that's fine. If that was, if that's what the concern is, the extension, we'd be happy to update it.
That would be, that would be one of the things I'd be looking for before I personally would even consider thinking about an extension. This is, you know, solar is a part of our world now, you know, there's no getting around it for a lot of people. Where we put it, how it affects people's lives, and more importantly for me, what's gonna be left behind that we have to deal with 20 years from now, that's the part that I'm concerned about, is, you know, it's all, right now, it's all, well, we're gonna send it to be recycled. Okay, how, where? You know, it's all, it's all discussed in generalities and ambiguity. There's no hard and fast. All right, the panels are gonna go to XYZ Recycling Company, 52% of the product is gonna be reclaimed, the rest of it's gonna go to a landfill. We're not getting any of that information from anybody, not just you. So because we've learned a lot of this stuff over the past two years, when this project was first brought before us, now it's a lot, you know, it's more of a concern. So for me, that's my big, my big concern right now. Sherri?
I just wanted, I haven't had a chance to study what you've provided on about the Plymouth group study, but can you give me a sense of where and how that's going? I mean, the way that we became aware of this proceeding was through your, you know, through your request for an extension of time. In looking at the pleadings in that case, it looks as if the question of allocation of costs related to interconnection was, it was sort of postured as a make or break for the solar developers. And with language that is as sort of heavy and foreboding as that, it makes me wonder and worry about whether, whether this is going to proceed in a way that allows you to go forward with your project if, if we say yes to it. And I'm also worried about us spending time, of which we have precious little, on a matter that unfortunately may not be, you know, going to a good place. And I'm, you know, sorry to say it that way, but, but you know what I mean. So if you could tell me a bit more about this, we talked about this a little bit last time. I have looked at the proceeding a little bit in the, at the DPU website. As I've said before, a lot of the information has been redacted on costs, and I know there are different positions on cost allocation, but if you could give me more of a sense of it, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, I'll do my best. The short, the shortest answer for that is the, they have gotten to the stage now with this group, the Plymouth group study, where there are preliminary results that are completed and have been issued. And I think there's plenty of, all that is unredacted, so that you're able to see it in the DPU docket, or should be able to. And the group that this is in, the preliminary results are favorable, you know, enough to, you know, make, to make the projects and not break them. The, in terms of cost allocation, there's still, there are no, you know, there's no final methods that have been decided on there. In fact, in the, in the open docket, you'll see comments from the AG's office and several other places where they're still talking about multiple different ways of proposals that are out there for how that could work. But any number of them with the preliminary results that have been issued so far, as long as there is a whole, there is a separate part of the process called the, an adjudicatory proceeding with the DPU, where the methods that Eversource used in the group study to reach their preliminary conclusions are gonna get tested a little bit, and as long as everything in there holds up, I think the outlook for the projects is positive.
And these are related some other, to other projects in the Fair Haven area, correct, in terms of the, the kind of methodology that's being proposed?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
And what do you expect the timing to be? I mean, I see, just from what I can see in the, in the file, that the hearing has been delayed just a bit in order to avoid, in order to allow for the results of the Fair Haven study to come and be examined. But if you're, you're looking at this in terms of your project going forward, when would you be expecting to receive results and be in a position to negotiate an interconnection agreement with Eversource?
Right now, you're absolutely right. That's like news as of, in, just in the last couple of weeks, so you're right up to the minute with the Plymouth one pushing a little bit further into next year. The Marion Fair Haven one is gonna be the first one. We think that that's gonna be around the end of this year or sometime in January. And then the other groups, Plymouth being one of them, will follow later in the spring or early summer. So June-July timeframe is our expectation.
And do you expect to be able to be, to negotiate an interconnection agreement before the June-July timeframe?
No, that, that's when, that's, as far as I understand right now, about when the interconnection agreements will be issued.
Okay. But, but not before?
I don't think so. No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Anyone else?
I will, but I don't know about Sam.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'd also, first, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. I'd like to do that.
Greg Sampson.
Mr. Sampson, Attorney Sampson. Thank you. In discussing the decommissioning plan, you said you reviewed it, and you're gonna address Mr. King's record. Were battery disposal costs specifically called out in that?
Yes, and, yeah, in fact, I was gonna mention that. I think that was one of the key question that came up last time, is just going back to look at the logic and method that was baked into the decommissioning number that was approved at the time it was permitted, and we did, we were able to confirm that decommissioning the battery was included in that amount.
Great, thank you. Just as a favor, and I know we're gonna talk about getting, can you send me a copy of the current decommissioning plan for my reference?
Yep.
If you have it?
I think that might be on the site.
Oh, if it was, I missed it. If we already have it...
Might be. Let me look real quick.
Do you think it's already there, Mr. Buckland?
Do we already?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'll look. If not, I'll, I'll let you know. It's not critical, it's just my education. All right. So speaking to the document that Mr. Chairman King referenced regarding the case in Charlton, which I believe is being adjudicated, and it really is around the total cost of decommissioning. And the individual provided, it wasn't specifically for us, but we got a copy of it that's being provided in their pleading, I think, is that decommission costs are substantially being underestimated. So the analysis done in this case, and we have not had time to review it, is that decommissioning costs should be calculated at about $267,000 per megawatt, which is substantially greater. How many megawatts in this project? 20 or 30, right?
Between the two, a little less than that, but that's close, yeah.
Yeah, I was, that's substantially more than, than what we've been discussing in terms of amounts. So I think we need to think about this a little more, and this applies to all of our solar projects, and I believe, I hope to bring it up whenever we do the periodic reviews, like you say. I mean, yes, we made an agreement, that's what we made the agreement, but we have the review process. So I, we're looking at, this, this number is substantially greater than, than what we've been using for any of our projects in the past, and there's some rationale for how that was calculated. The other issue that has recently come up and is also addressed in this letter is the cost of disposal. And I know that in our, there's several that I've looked at, the cost of disposal was not addressed. I don't know if it was addressed in your estimate or not, which is why I wanted to go review it. Some of the newer ones that has not been addressed. But the cost of disposal is, I believe in that, included in that $267,000 estimate. But the cost of disposal is non-trivial, and I think the argument made in this, this information that we were given was that the assumptions about being able to recycle or the cost, you know, are not proving out at the moment. So I'm concerned about these things. And I fully understand, this is a surety bond only in the case that the town has to take it over. And if we never take it over, it's your problem, and that's great, and I hope we never ever come together to discuss having to take it over. But these are, these are things that we're now looking at. The other issue is, I believe that we need to add a line item, and it doesn't seem like it'll be a problem for you, but a line item to our decommissioning plans that talk about the cost of disposal. So as long as that's in your plan, at least you've addressed it, and batteries are in your plan, you've addressed it. But I think, I think we're gonna start taking a hard look at how to substantiate this. One of the requests I did make is, have you gone back, are other towns challenging your costs, or are you, what are you seeing in other towns, methodologies and things like that?
I think the person that can speak best to that, just to ride, but very similar process to what we went through here, where, you know, we, we put a decommissioning estimate forth, we bake as everything in there that we can try to account for today. I mean, it is a little bit of a conundrum, because... I mean, it is a little bit of a conundrum because you can't, you're not, there's, there's no ability to go out and ask somebody for a quote for what something's going to cost 30 years from now.
Right, right.
Everything does need to be an estimate. Dean and I did review the, the estimate that was done for this. He did carry allowances for disposal. Again, it needs to be a projection or an estimate for what those costs will be 30 years from now. And I'm not familiar with the study that you guys read recently in, in Charlton, but part of the exercise.
And we haven't provided, I, I recognize, we got it today, or I got it today, so.
Yep. And, you know, part of the exercise also is netting out the, what the actual cost will be to decommissioning, decommissioning the project at its end of life, but also acknowledging that there is significant scrap and salvage value in a lot of the materials that are, that are there, so.
But we're not, we're not, in our reviews, we're not accepting salvage value because if we have to, the town is not going to be able to, to do.
Well, not only that, but you're anticipating what, what the market's going to be 20 years from now. You have no idea.
So if you could, if Dean would like to come forward, he, he, I don't think he heard my number, I don't want to see him fall over, but the estimate that we're, we're looking at right now is for decommissioning $267,000 per megawatt, which is substantially more than your estimate. And I, I recognize I'm sort of presenting that to you out of the blue. But that, there was a methodology for that calculation.
Yes, understood. And I would be interested in seeing the information that you have. That is substantially more than any town that we've worked with has settled on for decommissioning costs. Several times, the highest ones that I've seen. What, what was approved for these are some of the highest ones that we have seen internally within our company. So we felt that we were in the right range. It's the range that's been approved by many other towns in Massachusetts in, in the same value.
But to answer your original question too, the, the process that we usually go for through is very similar, where we put forward an estimate, it's reviewed by your peer reviewer, there's some back and forth, and we arrive at a number. I mean, that, you're doing the exact same thing that every other town does.
In fact, I, I guess, I think I'm glad that we've agreed to a process for periodic reviews and for discussion. And I think that, that does provide me some comfort, that as we all learn more going forward, there's a process for adjustment.
And to be clear too, we tried to, in our letter, you'll see, I know you're just now getting the hard copies or seeing them for the first time, but we tried to accommodate that in, in what we proposed because, you know, if we get, if the extensions go through, you know, there's a, there'd be, you know, a point in time decommissioning number again. And what we proposed was, before we get the building permit, because we don't know exactly when the interconnection agreements will be issued, you know, there might be another six months of water under the bridge at that point. And what we proposed was, instead of listing a number again now, why don't we do the calculation again just before we get the building permit, so you know that when we move into construction, you've got an accurate and updated number at, at that point. So that, that was the proposal.
Great. So if, if we get the, an updated plan, and if we talk about all that in that plan, I think, that would be great. One, one last comment.
Sure.
I want to thank you, I went down my list of everything I had asked for, or we had asked for, and thank you, you gave us everything but one thing. I, I had asked, and, because I couldn't find it on our site, and I didn't want to, the original conditions of approval for the project, the, the, that we gave you, the planning board gave you, I just don't have a, is, that wasn't in this package, I don't think.
It's not.
And I just wanted to be able to read that. I don't, oh, great, thank you. Then you've given.
I only have one copy, but if.
And I'll make copies for anyone on the board. If I can have this, I'll make copies. Thank you. Then you, I thank you, you have, you have actually provided everything that I think we asked for at the 10, 17 meeting.
We tried to take good notes and follow through, so.
Well, and I, I had every one of these on a checklist that I was planning to ask for tonight, so. Thank you.
Sam, do you have anything?
Can I add one thing about the, the decommissioning? I think one thing that I feel has not really been addressed in the decommissioning estimates is the fact that 10 years ago, there was not a single ground mountain, ground mounted solar project out there. Now we've got, we've been inundated with them. And they're all going to become obsolete.
On the same day, on the same day.
And so there's going to be this huge glut in the, the recycling market. And that may be a good thing, maybe it means that we'll have figured it out because there will be so many, or maybe not.
Right.
In which case, they're going to be of no value, and going to have to figure out how to dispose of them properly, because there's so many. Separate materials and.
That was my concern, was that you can't, you can't project 20 years from now where something's going to be.
It's difficult, but I think that that's a, that's a component in the equation that needs to be considered, is this glut that we're going to have in the, the market for disposing of.
It's going to be real good or real bad.
It's going to be really intense.
Millions of panels.
The, just so that, you know, we don't surprise you, I, I know you were surprised by the, the number, 267,000 per megawatt. That was only part of the Charlton calculation. It was actually.
Oh, I may have missed.
It, it was actually 267,000 per megawatt and 250,000 per battery. So there's more to it than what was.
So clearly, I need to spend more time, but.
I, I would say, I, it's, it's public record, this document, so we can certainly get you a copy of it, so you can.
Can we, can we just post it so that, and then the citizens can see it as well?
I think that's a good idea. Yeah, we'll, we'll get it posted to the website, and then you can review it. But basically what it does is, it, it just takes on what we're all concerned about, which is, what do we do with these things 20 years from now when, when you're done making electricity with them? And, you know, we're, you're here proposing solar in the name of the planet, but yet we don't really know if we're going to be damaging the planet 20, 25 years from now with stuff that we can't get rid of, or we don't know how to get rid of. Right now, we don't know how to get rid of it. We can throw it in the landfill, but nobody's really reading through the document, and like I said, you'll have a copy of it, there really isn't anybody recycling these effectively. There, it's just not going on. So we just want to make sure, again, I know I sound like a broken record, but we want to make sure we do what's right for the town. You know, we're, we're your host. We have to live here, so we have to make sure we do the right thing.
Of course.
Anybody else on the board? No, no other questions? Okay. Okay. So, and I'm going to make the assumption that everything we've discussed thus far also applies to 27 Charge Pond Road. I mean, it's two projects with the same concerns. So.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Quirk.
Carl made a suggestion that the Planning Board Subcommittee on Alternative Energy, should one come to exist, might be able to take on a subject like this and gather some information on, you know, what the parameters of this issue might be, and so.
And revise and clarify the bylaw. I went further to say that, yes.
Yeah. So if, I would just throw it out that that might be a mode that you would ask that we go into.
Okay.
That would not be in time for any of these projects.
No, it wouldn't.
Definitely not, no.
And as, just to update everybody, our revised solar bylaw, the AG owes us an answer not later than tomorrow. Mr. Buckland, you haven't heard anything, correct?
No, I haven't, and I expect it to be the last minute tomorrow. I bet you don't hear.
Well, I think they legally have to send at least a note saying they're not going to say something.
Some sort of communication.
Usually that comes a couple days later.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, after the deadline?
Yeah, always.
I'm surprised we're not going to make it.
Yeah, we spent a year, a bunch of citizens trying to improve our solar bylaw, based on our experiences, and it needs to be further improved.
Okay. All right. So we have given you our thoughts, concerns. At this point, Ken, if I, if, if I understand correctly, it's my discretion as to whether or not that we allow public comment, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Does Mr. Rowley have any comment? Do you want to check with him?
Nothing? Charlie, come on, throw me a bone, buddy.
You can't, you can't go out without a, a real.
Not my style.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay, I think for a couple of reasons. A, this wasn't posted in the Wareham Weekly, even though it was publicly posted on the town website as, as part of the agenda. And the fact that we've given you, again, more information that we'd like you to come back with, I'm going to, I think I'm going to forego public comment tonight, and just ask you to come back. We'll get that document up on the site so that you and the public can see it. It's a pretty big number. So, you know, I know you're looking for us to maybe review it at the time before you get your building permit, but if that number is something that we vehemently decide is something we should be doing for the town, that may change your business plan considerably. Because it is a big number, obviously. The other part of the Charlton decommissioning plan that they're using, and I'm not 100% sure it's being adjudicated.
I, I.
I, I don't think that's accurate.
Okay. I, I, that's how I interpreted the document that we got.
Right. No, I think it was an opinion piece written by an attorney, but I, I don't believe it's in front of a court. The number for the decommissioning was split into two piece, two components. 25% of it was held in cash by the town in a, I guess what would be the equivalent of a 53G account.
Interest-bearing account, at least.
Correct, right. The remaining balance was, was held in a, in a bond of some sort. So again, you know, big number, 25% of it's cash, that, in my mind, being a business owner, starts to change things. So, you know, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that. But you'll be able to read all of that in the document. It's not long, I think it's like seven pages, but it does go into detail their thought process of why they're doing it, and that, you know, it's something that we could very possibly be considering as our new benchmark. So if there's nothing else, then I guess we just need to pick a date to have you come back with some decommissioning information. Let's see what we've got here, December.
We only have one meeting in December, or do we have?
Just one. No, the 26th is, is not available. So I don't think anybody wants to be here on the 26th anyway. So we have December 12th, which is still very light as far as the agenda goes, so it gives you, if it gives you enough time, you know, in your estimation to come back prepared.
Yes, that would, that would give enough time to update things.
Okay, so we'll put one, both 150 to Hornet Pond and 27 Charge Pond on the agenda for December 12th.
And if you could, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I could also ask for any updates that might occur in the DPU proceeding, that would, I doubt it, but one can remain hopeful. I would also be curious to know where, that, how your access to solar panels is at this point.
That's an, that's an interesting, I, I read a very lengthy document today suggesting that solar panels are now starting to become very difficult to get your hands on, because a lot of them are, are being held up in customs. So that, not that, that, that's not really our concern, it's more of, you know, a business interruption for you, but, okay. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Just one, I was going to ask, so the, that Charlton document is going to be posted on your planning board section of the Wareham website?
We'll send it to you directly.
Okay.
Well, I think it should be up there anyway, Ken, if we could put it up.
Yeah, we'll send it to you directly, just make sure he gets it.
Yeah, that way, that way the, the public can have a look at it, because it is a public document, and I mean, that's where I got it, so.
Great. I just want to make sure I looked in the right place for it. Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay.
So we have to take a vote?
To, to.
To move it.
Move the meeting. So.
Continue.
So I would entertain a motion to continue 150 to Hornet Road and 27 Charge Pond Road to the upcoming meeting of December 12th.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason, all in favor. Jane?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
King?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay, next up, discussion and possible vote, Bay Point-Widwood Pines Tripartite Release. Do we have anybody here?
I had a discussion with Tim Fay today. What he would like to do is have a, a representative or two from the planning board to sit down and talk over the, the tripartite agreement and the, the covenants and, and the amounts of money that are to be released.
Okay. I, to be honest, I'd like to have, I don't have a problem with that, but it's probably going to be easier to sort through the numbers and get to a point that we can agree with. But I would definitely want Charlie to be part of that meeting.
Oh, absolutely. Sorry to ask you there as well, too, because he's the one who's been reviewing the results and making sure that things are done the way they should be done.
Okay, and I think, yes, I just.
Mr. Chairman, I, I don't fully understand the purpose in that meeting. The request has come before you as a board, you have the documentation, you have my recommendation. At this point, if he's talking about changing numbers, he's got to come in with a brand-new set of numbers. I'm not comfortable any longer dealing with that sort of a situation. It should be here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, through you to Mr. Buckland. I want to make sure I understood. Are we, does the applicant want to just review the Phase 2 Covenant Tripartite Agreement? Or are we going to go back and look at the Phase 1 Tripartite Agreement, which was failed to be extended, I think, and needs to be extended?
He'll, he'll go over whatever you want to go over.
So it's more than just the numbers? But, but yeah, I, I would be uncomfortable without Charlie's, at least, historical knowledge.
If, if you request me to go, I would be happy to do that, but I will make no decisions on behalf of you, on your board. I will say to the, to the people that are there, all right, I have the information, I'll carry it back to the planning boards the next meeting.
Oh, I wouldn't expect you to be by yourself, according to this understanding.
Even if somebody, I would not recommend doing anything outside of this meeting for, for the approval of the money that they requested be released.
We can't be approved.
So I'm, I don't understand the reason behind the meeting.
Well, what is, Carl, what, what, what is the, the hiccup that we can't approve what they're requesting?
For tonight?
Yes.
Other than we just have to make sure that we understand what we're approving tonight. I, my question was, is I think the Phase 1 Tripartite Agreement, I think the covenant for Phase 1, I haven't been able to confirm that it was properly released, much like the Phase 2 covenant wasn't properly released.
We didn't ask for copies of that, did we?
Yes, and I have, we haven't gotten it yet.
Ken, have you received those?
I've seen the one for Phase 2.
Yeah, we asked for Phase 2, we haven't gotten that yet, on the board, anyway. But we also, I, I've been researching, and this is going back to our comment about the minutes. I can't confirm that the Phase 1 covenant was properly released, and the Phase 2 covenant had the two-year, 24-month condition for expiration, and that date passed, and I can't find in the record where that was extended. So those are questions, and they're, I've, I've raised them to Mr. Fay in the past.
Can we, how about this? Can we set up a meeting with Mr. Fay that goes over bullet point by bullet point, every single thing that we have concerns about, and that what we expect for answers at the next meeting? And, and so that we can put this, this particular subject to bed? Because right, right now, like Carl said, we asked for a copy of the release for Phase 2.
Staffed, planted.
And we still don't have it. So, you know, how can we release funds for a phase that we still don't have? So, you know, how can we release funds for a phase that we still don't have? We still don't have the documentation that we asked for at the last meeting? And, and if it is in the planning office, then it needs to be up on the website and it needs to be distributed to the board. I mean, we can't act on paperwork that doesn't exist in our, in our hands.
Right.
So, I mean, I think for constructive reasons, it's not gonna be a matter of anything has changed as far as what's been, what's been completed and what Charlie's suggestions are, we have those.
And we've agreed roughly on the number last time, and it was actually in the motion. So, we know the number, at least for Phase II.
Right, we, but we don't have the, the release.
And we didn't necessarily, I think, in reviewing the motion from that meeting, we didn't have a spreadsheet that we were all sharing, that, that we were sure that that was the list of lines. And I'll forego my concern about the 35% contingency fee. Thank you.
If, if you want, in the meantime, I'll, I'll get that spreadsheet to you.
Well, I have the one from your October letter, if it hasn't changed.
Nothing has changed from when they submitted that before.
Okay.
It's exactly the same information, and my cost, my cost estimate released to you is based on that.
Right, but you made some changes on lines, on your estimate line, by the way.
I did, and my letter identifies each one of the items where I recommended that change.
But we didn't get an updated spreadsheet, then, with that, with those numbers on it.
If that's what you want, I don't think you need it, but based on the information, if that's what you want, then you'll have to request that of Tim Fay.
I think that's what we were trying to request. And my answer is, why do we need it? Because it has to be part of the public record so that two years from now, the next time we are asked to release funds, we can go back and see what we released the last time. And it's too hard to figure that out from the public record. I, I'm sure you know, because you, your records are pristine. I, I don't question that at all.
But everything that I've submitted to you is, is either directly to each board member and/or to the planning office.
Except that some of these things happened three years ago, and I can't figure out what we've released.
Okay, well, if you want me to attend the meeting and to discuss these items, I need a list of what you want me to talk about.
But are we, are we correct in the fact that we can't release funds if the stamped release for Phase II is not in our hands? Yes or no?
It's, no.
It's not correct, or we can't release funds?
I don't recommend releasing it. I don't say that it's correct or incorrect. We know it's a matter of public record, it's in the registry of deeds.
Right.
I was able to confirm that. What they haven't done is get the copy of the recorded document back to you, like they're supposed to.
Right, okay.
So, they haven't followed through with their end of the bargain, and that's not just something that comes from me, that's in the state statute.
Yep.
It's in your special permit. So, when they get things in order in your special permit, then I guess you'd be free to...
Okay, so if we could, if we could agree to convene for a very informal meeting with Tim, with you, with Ken, with Carl. If I'm, if I'm gonna attend, it has to be on a Friday. I'm sorry, I work for a living Monday through Thursday.
No, you retired, it was your choice to go back to work.
It went up, that, that went real well. And, Tim, if you could make arrangements...
Is Mr. Fay, is Mr. Fay on?
Mr. Fay is here. No, is he?
No.
No. I thought I saw him.
Two in a row.
If we can reach out to Tim and ask him to please attend that meeting with that stamped document, so at least we can get past that, I mean, that should be easy.
And, and Ken, if you want me to, I'll come tell you what I would like to discuss and make sure...
I think, I think that's a good idea, Carl, that you be there.
Okay.
No, but I meant before the meeting, I'll come by and just, you can...
We've already listed it out in your email.
Well, make sure I'm sane.
All right.
Okay. So, I would entertain a motion that we continue the discussion and possible vote on Bay Point-Widwood Pines tripartite release until the meeting of December 12th, at which time we would have had this meeting, ironed out the details that we need as a board to legally release the funds for Phase II. Did that, that sound good? Did I do that all right?
Yeah.
You gotta, you gotta help me, Charlie. I only got you, I only got you for three more weeks, or four more weeks, and then I'm a poops Greek, so... Come on.
Well, somebody's gonna have to set up the meeting in the next week.
That guy right there.
Okay.
He's the one that just asked for it.
As soon as I find out when it is, I'll make an attempt to be there.
Okay. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike? Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. May you crumble. That's it, I think we're gonna, that's, that's pretty much gonna fill up our docket for the 12th. I hope there's nothing else coming down the line. Okay, so Ken, you're gonna try to set that up for Friday sometime, if, if at all possible? Either this Friday or the following Friday?
See what I can do, yeah.
Okay, all right, cool. Okay, continued public hearings. 3-22 Jason St. Martin Site Plan Review, 5 Dodie Street. Map 103, Lot 1027, proposing a parking lot. Do we have someone here to speak to this? No.
Anybody in the ether?
Hello, can you hear me?
Do we have some? Okay, welcome. If you had identified...
This is Emily Williamson with Shiree Pattery, representing Eversource.
Okay, welcome.
Would you like me to share my screen and kind of give an overview of the project? Or I think you're all pretty familiar with it as well.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that Patty, our transcriber, asked is if the people who, when they say their name, could also spell it as well, too, so you can get the correct spelling and record.
That's a good idea, yeah, because the audio is not fabulous.
That's right.
If you, if you could, before we begin, ma'am, if you could spell your name, please, your last name?
Yep, it's Emily Williamson, E.M.I.L.Y., and then W.I.L.L.I.A.M.S.O.N.
Thank you. What are we waiting on for this one?
There were two items, I think, we, I had listed us waiting for.
That's what I was looking for, was the email?
We needed to confirm the plan set that we're voting on was dated 9/6, and that was not posted on the website when I looked, maybe it's there now, Emily. And we were looking for the Order of Conditions for the conservation, from the Conservation Commission, and we didn't have a copy of that at the last meeting, either. And I checked, I didn't see them today.
Sonya uploaded all of those to, to the website on 11/17.
Okay, let's see if we can find them.
I, then I... Okay, so that's good.
9/6 plan set we have.
I missed, I missed that.
Yep, and the Order of Conditions.
Okay, I apologize for missing that, good, they're closed.
Yeah, it looks like the Order of Conditions actually went up yesterday.
Oh, so it was after I looked?
10/27 is when it went up.
No, 11/27.
I mean, 11/27.
Okay. That was the date of the meeting, I think.
Well, well, that's, that's what's listed on the site for a date, which is, that, again, is confusing, this crap. I mean, it should be, the date posted should be the date that it becomes public.
All right, so I apologize for not updating my check. Those were the two things that I was waiting for, and I think everything else... I need one more, do you have enough?
I'm sorry, I'll look, I'll just look at the...
I can share with you, or I can share with Sam. Here, you look at this, I'll share with Sam.
The plan set that I have here in my hand says 9/7/21. There it is. Page four, page four. And under revisions, we've got 10/5/21 and 11/2/21. I don't see anything dated 9/7/22.
Where are you seeing the, the 9/7 date?
I'm seeing that on page four of the plan set. Bottom right corner says Eversource Energy Station 713. It says dated...
Oh, yeah, that, that is the official boundary survey that was completed then. That, that wasn't, that, that was created by another company. We included in our plan set for reference of, you know, the boundary and the topographic survey.
So, I'm still confused, where, where, where am I finding the plans dated 9/7/2022?
That is the, the plan set you're holding there. It's on all the other sheets. It, it says in the lower right-hand corner, the, the 9/6 date.
The plan set I have in my hand, right here, which is CD01, is the sheet that I'm looking at, is dated 12/3/21.
Which plan sheets are?
Well, anyone, C201?
Mr. Chairman, through you, through you to the applicant, perhaps Emily could share her screen with what she's looking at and then point us to where we should be looking?
But I mean, even, it's possible we have a bad set of plans, but even looking at the set online, that is listed as 9/22, 9/6/22, it's got the same dates on it. So, whatever's listed on the website is, is definitely wrong if there isn't a more up-to-date set of plans. So, yeah, if you could, Emily, share your screen so we can see it.
Yeah, one of the things we were trying to confirm is that we and the Conservation Commission are reviewing the same plan sets.
All right, I have to, I have to promote her to a panelist, so you boost her for a sec, and then you want her to share it.
Just make sure she knows that.
Should we get the panel?
These are showing 9/6, C101 online, C102. All except for the existing conditions surveys are showing 9/6. And there you go.
Okay, can you guys see my screen now?
Yep.
We're catching up to you.
Okay, so easiest place to start with the cover sheet here. Page one, if you zoom into the lower right-hand corner. I don't know where it says date.
Okay, I, are we catching up?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
All except for the existing conditions are dated 9/6 online.
So, the existing conditions, you said?
Yeah, the existing conditions is not dated 9/6, but that has some logic behind it.
Yeah, yeah, that is, like I said, that was produced once, and, and that, that's the, the same copy of that sheet that Conservation received as well.
Right.
I see nothing with October 6 on there at all.
Mike, where were you saying, I'm looking at this sheet, where did you get the 12/6? I'm looking down here, it says...
12/3/21.
What's this, well, that's not 9/6.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, well, wait, I thought you said you found the 9/6.
Online.
Oh, online.
Online.
What we have for paper is, is not right.
It's all...
It's all. What's online is, is accurate.
Oh, now I'm not losing my mind.
Yeah, that's the...
Maybe, maybe I am. I'm gonna go check with Ken tomorrow, he's gonna tell me if I'm losing my mind. All right, so I, I think, Emily, the problem is the paper set we have is not the correct set.
That's accurate.
Everything else online is dated 9/6.
Except for the two existing conditions plans.
Which makes sense.
One, one of which is dated 9/7/2021, and the other is dated 8/19/2021.
So, since the, the online one is the correct, 9/6 plan set that you requested, and that was, what was posted and submitted, I mean, does that meet your requirements, then, that you requested last time?
Well, except that the, as Jane pointed out, the addition, existing conditions is not dated properly. It's got an old date on it.
That, that makes sense, though, that that was done. It's existing conditions, it hasn't changed, it won't change.
C004.
That makes sense to me, I...
Yeah, no?
Yeah, me too.
That's, that's fine. Okay, so we have a, we have a set of plans dated 9/6, and we have the Order of Conditions from CONCOM.
And the applicant has confirmed that CONCOM and us are looking at the same plan set. So, that was the last two things, I think, and they previously have agreed to all of Charlie's comments and adjustments.
Right.
I think that was the only remaining...
That was the only thing that I think we needed, was those two items. Conditions of approval. And property rights does not leave. Date maintenance, right? Okay. Yeah, so it looks like we have what we need. Thank you for getting that to us. Is there any, any comments from the board?
On page 1, 1-2, they got Carver Road going across on the diagonal in the bottom, that should be Route 28. Carver Road goes straight across. Since we're picking on pick-me-when you jump.
This is on page what?
1-2.
Which page, sorry?
Sheet 1 of 2 of the existing conditions? And 2 of 2.
And what was on those sheets that you were pointing out?
Carver Road going across the bottom of the page, it should be Route 28. Right, also on 2-2.
Is that also called Carver Road?
Carver Road goes straight across, that's Route 28.
Okay, uh, okay, yep. Carver Road extension, y'all.
Did you what? What's that, Mike?
Bit of fire, bit chucka.
So, Carver Road extension really should say Route 28?
No. Carver Road should say Route 28. Carver Road...
Where it goes off to the left?
Yes.
Yep.
Can we accept that as a Scrivener's error?
No.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Engineering oversight.
So, we need to have that re-fixed on, on the final plans before... So we need to have that fixed on, on the final plans before we can approve them? All right.
Is the applicant here then?
Okay, so it looks like at this point, we're gonna be unable to vote on this and approve it until we can get a revised set of plans with that error corrected.
You can vote it as a condition of-
We, can we do that, Charlie?
If you wish.
I can, I can make that, that call?
Well, the board has to vote on it, but you can do it that way if you wish.
Okay. I'd hate to hold this up for that. Okay, so-
You still have to write up your special permit anyway, right?
Yes, we, we haven't written a special permit, right?
There was one more condition that you had requested at the last meeting, Mr. Chairman. That was that they maintain the site by regular cutting of the grass and wouldn't be any lower than four inches within the drainage area.
No lower than four, right.
Yeah. But you're gonna have to write up your special permit anyway. Then there's the 20-day appeal parade that has to run, so they have some time to get those revised plans in-
Yep.
With the correction before you actually sign the special permit.
Okay, so after after public comment, I can close the hearing.
You can.
I lost track of where we are on this.
So just to make sure I understood everything, so you guys will vote for approval tonight and then one of your conditions will be for us to update that, that road label. Is that correct?
We could vote to deny.
That, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I've been doing this too long today.
Okay. Okay. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to this since it is a continued public hearing? I'm gonna take that as a no. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing for 3-22 Jason St. Martin Site Plan Review, 5 Dodie Street, MAP 103, Lot 1027, proposing a parking lot. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Jane Gleason. All those in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye, and with the understanding that it's conditioned on revising the plan set to properly show Route 28 and that we're gonna add the additional condition about cutting the grass. So yes, aye.
And the chair votes aye. So the public hearing is now closed. Thank Lord. Can't find the conditions.
Oh, my comment should really be on the next vote.
I knew that. That's right. I let it slide anyway.
Thank you.
Okay, so now that the public hearing is closed, I would entertain a motion to approve based on Carl's-
Well, the conditions that we discussed, revising the plan to properly show Route 28.
Route 28 and-
Add the condition about maintenance of the grass and maintenance of the site and that, and-
Which, which will all be written in the special permit?
Right, will all be written in the special permit.
Okay. That's a good motion. I like that.
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay.
And it's also that there's no repair of vehicles there or vehicles to be repaired.
That should, yeah, that should-
That's already been listed, though.
That should, yeah, we have to review that. No repair vehicles, agreed. No repair vehicles on this lot.
Agreed.
Okay, so we have a motion by Carl Schultz, seconded by Sam Corbett. All in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We will get the special permit written up with the conditions and get them to the applicant. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much. Just to check, that'd be like about a week or so. We'd expect to receive those conditions from you guys?
That's right.
It should be a week. Our planning office is woefully understaffed right now, so try to bear with us a tiny bit.
Oh, yeah, that's totally fine. Just wanna let the client know what the expected turnaround time is. And then you said there's a 20-day period after we receive the conditions, right?
Correct. There's a 20-day appeal period by anyone who might take offense at our decision.
And it's not a condition of this approval, but at the last meeting, Ryan agreed that if we approved this, he would deal with the lawn mowing on Toby Road.
Correct.
So, just remind him he said that.
And it is on the record.
Yes, I will definitely bring that up again. I know he did email the project team right away after the last meeting. He mentioned that, so.
Okay.
I'll check in on that status. And then just to make sure for construction start, are we okay to start construction then? Or do we need to wait for that 20-day period?
I would err on the side of caution and wait for that 20-day appeal, to be honest.
You're at risk if you proceed with that.
Right. And honestly, I'm not sure what the urgency is from EverSource's side, but we had multiple, multiple agenda, agendas where this was on it. And the representative for this project was a no-show, no communication, no nothing. And that went on several times. So I think the 20 days is not a lot to ask, that you waited out.
That's by law, anyway.
That's right. But I mean, it's just, you know.
The building department shouldn't issue a building permit before that period, should they, Ken?
It doesn't require a building permit as far as I'm aware.
Yeah.
Oh, there's no structure, so there's no building permit, right?
Yeah, I would definitely err on the side of caution and wait the 20 days.
Okay, all right, yeah. I apologize for any past miscommunication there. Really appreciate you guys working with us to get this approved.
Okay, thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Something off the table.
Yay!
I should have done this beforehand. Please forgive me, anyone here. For 19-22 Dos Amigos Realty, they did send in a request for a continuance, so we won't be hearing that tonight. I would like to take a vote on the continuance.
Do we have a date continuing, Chris?
Well, December 12th is full, so I'm not even gonna entertain adding it to the 12th.
I'd like to discuss, if I could even discussing this. It came in today at 2:20.
Right, another last second, which is why I'm not, I'm not entertaining the 12th.
And, and the answer, I think, that we've continually reached is if we don't vote to continue it, then we have to close the public hearing tonight and take a vote on that project.
I agree.
So I'm just saying, that's, that's traditionally why we have... So that's our option as well.
Which, I mean, that is an option. I, I think, the only thing I would say is they've only been ahead of, before us once, twice?
At least twice.
I think twice.
I don't know when the application started.
So, looking at other projects that have been before us 20, 30 times, I think I'd like to give them the benefit of the doubt and let them get the continuance. And we'll put it off to a, a date in January, if that's okay with the board. Okay, so I would entertain-
You just have to make a time certain or a date certain, Mike, that's all.
I got my new planner. Thank you, Sonia. So I would entertain a motion to accept the request for continuance from 19-22 Dos Amigos Realty and put it on the planning board agenda for...
January 9th.
I was thinking more of January 23rd, to be honest.
They probably could wait that long, too.
What's that?
They probably could wait that long because they have to get EverSource to agree on the, on the polls in the meantime as well.
So they can't wait that long?
They probably have to wait that long.
Right, okay. So I'll stick to my first intuition and then let's put it on for Monday, January 23rd, 2023?
Yes. Could we notify the applicant that we, I checked and maybe I missed it, but we still don't have the formal fire department letter, which we had asked for?
We do. I sent that. Ken, Ken, you have that. It's not up on the website?
I asked Sonia to put it up on the website, so maybe it is.
I'll send you a copy. We do have it.
Okay, I thought I looked yesterday and I didn't see it.
Yeah, it was, it was a couple of weeks ago. It was-
It wasn't that long ago. I talked to Chris Smith about this last week.
Fire Department Letter for Squirrel Island Road Project from Wareham Fire Department, dated 11/22/22.
Correct.
I'm, I'm gotta get better at finding things on the website.
Yeah, 'cause I, his, his letter was, was a little bit ambiguous as to whether or not the turnaround, the hammerhead turnaround was gonna be sufficient for the, for the big ladder truck. And when he sent the letter into the office, I questioned him and said, "You're really not saying yes or no." And he responded and said, "You're right. Take this email as, yes, it is acceptable." The 18-foot wide travelway and the turnaround. So, and I, I did send those in to have them put up on the site.
Yeah, so we have that, we should have that.
So we're just, we're just behind in them out there.
This is Dos Amigos. I thought I looked yesterday. Oh, all right, I didn't recognize. It said comment letter.
Right, from fire department.
Yeah, well, I didn't see the "from" fire department. We gotta, we gotta-
Yeah, I, I think the only thing we're missing from them at this point is, is EverSource.
The interconnect agreement or whatever.
We, we need some answers as to what's gonna go on with that. Okay, so I need a motion to continue till January 23rd.
So moved.
I have a motion by Sherry Quirk, seconded by Mike Baptiste. All those in favor? Sherry?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Is that a "A" from Sam? Is that a "A"?
Yes.
So we have a 5, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 5, 1, 0. Okay. Next up, 12-22 Wareham, Mass. 3 LLC, 91 and 101 Fering Hill Road. Site plan review, MAP 91 and 71, lots 1,000 and 1,007. Proposing ground-mounted solar energy generation facility. Continued public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. For the record, my name is Joe Shanahan. On behalf of the applicant, as I'm sure all members of the board are aware, on November 16, your local Conservation Commission voted to deny this project in order of conditions. We will be appealing that decision to both the Department of Environmental Protection and the Superior Court. And I'm here this evening with the request that this public hearing be left open until that particular adjudication is completed. I'll go into greater detail if you wish, but that's the reason for my appearance.
Okay, thank you. Well, it's, obviously, it's certainly prerogative to, to contest the findings of the CONCOM. I personally don't have any issue with keeping the public hearing opening until, open until that is resolved. I think it's probably best that we do it that way. So, do we have a... I've got a 2023 calendar. Should I open my 2024 or...
You should leave it wide open.
Just leave it. So, can, can we leave? Can we leave?
Can we do that, Charlie?
A date certain.
We have to have a date certain, so why don't we pick?
So if we go six months and reconsider it?
May I ask, you go 90 days, 120 days?
Okay.
If you go six months and-
Yeah, that's a little bit too far.
Yes, thank you.
All right, so if we go... How about February 20?
That's fine.
That gives us 90 days roughly.
2/20?
2/20, yep.
And that would make it not premature for me to wish all of you a Happy New Year.
Mr. Buckland was gonna make a statement, then I have a comment.
Okay, Mr. Buckland?
It could be we'll have a superseding order of conditions at that time if it's, if they're successful with the state. I doubt that the court would be done with the local bylaw at that time, though.
I doubt they will be either. Okay, so-
May, may I, Mr. Chairman?
Of course.
What happens in that case if the state reverses, but it's still pending in court?
It could be that the Conservation Commission still prevails, but under the local bylaw.
Okay.
Yeah, it would have to be overturned in both jurisdictions.
Thank you.
So I, I fully understand and support the reasoning. I wanna try and voice my thought. This, this has been going on, I don't know how long, almost two years.
19 months, Mr. Schles.
So, and during that time, the volume of materials and comment that we have collected and need to review for the final adjudication is enormous, which is our job. However, if we keep this open for another 90 days, the floodgates, I, I don't expect the flood of input and comment to abate. I, I don't know how to process all that.
It is, it is an awful lot. I agree. But what, what choice do we have?
I guess, and we can't tell the, the public not to-
Right.
We don't want them to not-
They, they have their right to, to submit their thoughts and concerns.
About 600 pages.
Been going on a long time, there's no doubt. But again, what choices do we have here?
We don't.
Right, we, we really don't. I mean, it, he, the proponent has their right to, to contest the finding of the CONCOM and we have to stand on those sidelines and wait for that to run its course.
We don't have to wait for that. We could actually deny.
We could close-
I'm just discussing. I'm, we could close and deny on 1551 because we don't have the two required, one of the two required documents from CONCOM. That would be seemingly unfair, but we, that is the other option.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, without getting into the merits of the Conservation Commission's denial, because that's not appropriate, but procedurally, when you talk about documents that have been submitted, our basis of appeal is three things. You folks hired a hydrologist who wished their report in May. We worked with Mr. Rowley and Mr. Price for six months to address, may I just finish?
Okay, I, I-
Address comments and accommodate all of their recommendations. During those entire six months, the Conservation Commission continued the public hearing, meeting after meeting after meeting, and on the public record indicated it was awaiting our final plans, final report from Mr. Rowley, and a final report from Mr. Price. The Conservation Administrator's report and recommendation of denial was filed with the CONCOM before any one of those three things were filed. That's procedure. I'm not getting into merits. So I think it would be terribly unfair, under those circumstances, for this board not to allow the continuance.
Thank you. I, I understand that. And I, I wasn't, I'm being really serious. I guess I probably, that was an option I'm not recommending.
After 19 months, I have trouble not being serious, Mr. Schles.
I, I didn't mean to be facetious. I'm not being arbitrary and capricious.
We agree what he's done for the last 18 months. It's been amazing.
Yeah.
He answered every question, every document, hired every person he requested. I think his suggestion is a good one. And I think, in all fairness, I think it's what we should do.
I, I, fine, I withdraw my comment. I apologize, Mr. Schultz.
No, no apology necessary. We've gotten to know each other so well, Mr. Schultz.
We're gonna have a party on the 24th.
Mr. Chairman, just sort of making an attempt to drain all the emotion away for just a minute. I think what you're proposing makes sense as a legal matter, that, that we stand back and, and see what the court and the state has to say about this, and then take up the matter when we know the answer to that question. If, if CONCOM is affirmed, then there's really nothing for us to do.
What, this is a serious con, one more comment. Mr. Buckland provided us a worksheet for finalizing our thoughts, and that, I think, will survive. It shouldn't change. We did get comment from Mr. Lintola about some documents that he thought may have been missing from the record. I recommend that we use this time to make sure that we know the documents on the record and what the final set of documents were gonna be. We, we could, we could get that organized.
Yeah, so you get the, get everything that's, that's on the, the website up, posted, kinda go through it.
Maybe we can organize it in terms of issue as well, too, so that there is, the categories are, are set aside for the different comments.
Good. I, I, Ms. Quirk and I had been, had been working on trying to get that organized. I can't volunteer her, but I will.
I will.
I, I will be glad to take Mr. Lintola's input, work with Mr. Buckland, and, and if Sherri wants, or anyone else. But we had started to try and list all the artifacts and, and...
I would suggest that listing them according to issue is gonna be difficult because some of them cover multiple.
Well, we could, we could then list them multiple times.
But I think that they could be listed by type of document. Anyway.
Well, we can work that out.
An approach you would see, excuse me, Mr. Chair. An approach you would see in other proceedings would be to list the documents by party, so that each, each party who has made comments, including the applicant, would have exhibits that, that are labeled as related to those parties, and that might make it a little bit easier.
Yeah. Is, is that how you would normally organize matter in a, in a legal case?
Yes.
In environmental review, like AMIBA document or an EIR, an EIS, you'd do it by subject matter and go through and categorize each paragraph in the, the documents that are provided, and relate them back to comments that respond to that.
Okay.
Sometimes the comment will repeat itself, and you just repeat the, the, for each of the paragraphs. But it, it essentially goes through each, each statement and makes, and categorizes it in terms of what its issue is and what the response is.
Okay, well, we can definitely work on. We've got 90 days to, to get our documents.
And we're not meeting on the 26th, so that gives us that day to work on.
You're right.
All right, so I, I will work, I, I will attempt to work, and under Mr. Buckland's guidance, come up with a way to try and summarize all this.
Okay. All right, so I would be looking for a motion to accept the proponent's request to keep the public hearing open and continue to February 20, 2023.
Point of order, that's President's Day. Are you folks here at President's Day?
As far as I know, we are. I don't believe that's...
Is town hall closed that day, Ken?
Town Hall is closed.
I, I don't know if town hall is closed that day or not.
All right, let's, let's take the, let's take the, the concern out of the equation. So let's move it to, since time was kinda... About?
First meeting in March.
March 6.
As long as it's not March 17th, Mr. Chairman, I'm good.
Yeah, it's, Purim begins at sundown. Does anybody have an issue with that day? No, okay. So we, we entertain a motion to keep the public hearing open and continue to March 6, 2023. Do we have said motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Sherri Quirk. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike? Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl? And chair vote aye.
Thank you all, and happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
You can't quit till this is done.
Yes, I can.
Nope.
You've got to tell them what too much is...
Okay, other topics not reasonably anticipated. What's the story? Have we gotten any response whatsoever from Wareham Retail Management, Master Millwork, Walmart? Or Toby Road?
Uh, Toby Road is the one where we got the...
We have a...
Information on mowing is, is gonna come back to us, and we'll find out if there's response there.
Well, that's, yeah, it's kind of a verbal commitment. I'll, I'll kinda give that one a pass. What about the other three? Have we heard anything?
No, nothing.
All right, so what do we do?
Well, one thing, well, go ahead, Sam, you're...
Well, one thing we have is, the board of selectmen is now back and goes, they're holding the license. They can't operate off after December 31st.
That's, so that's, takes care of Starbucks.
They, Starbucks applied and it was held last week. There's no meeting this week. Chipotle has not applied for the permits again, yet. I'm sure they will if they want to stay open, but they will be held. So that's one thing we do have over them right now. If it's not done by the 31st, they're closed, both of them.
Well, that, we've got that, but can't we, they had agreed to come back to us and be done by 12/3.
Right.
Can, we can withdraw the special permit.
Yep.
And shut them down immediately.
We, we could.
Yeah, we could. See, this is the problem for me, Ken. I, I understand it creates bad blood. The town wants to be a good business partner. But these people are thumbing their nose at us.
But enough is enough.
And, right. We have to draw a line in the sand somewhere, and this is as good a place as any. I would much rather dig, dig in and go toe-to-toe with a corporation who, having one store closed as a minor blip on their balance sheet, than go toe-to-toe with an independently owned business where closing them down could potentially put them out of business. So I think this is as good a place as any.
And I agree with that. My only, my only heartfelt concern is Starbucks won't care a hoot, but the people who work there won't get paid.
Right, agreed, but where?
And there's a thousand jobs available right now in town. Lindsay's is closing down after 74 years.
Yeah, cuz...
They can't get enough help. If they can't get help. I mean, they all can get jobs the next day. I, I'm, I'm, I'm done. I've been saying it for a long time. You know, Mike's been saying it for years.
I, I have to agree with Sam on this one. I, I, you know, it's one thing if they came back and said, "Hey, we can't do it because of X, Y, and Z."
It's been since January.
Right. This, this has gone on, on and on and on.
Okay.
And, and they're not responding to us. They're not even doing the courtesy of a letter.
Yeah, no response from them at all.
Right.
Exactly.
They could at least write a letter that says, "Take the hike. We're not doing it."
Or, or "We need help," or whatever. So that takes care of Starbucks if we decide to move that way. Master Mill, Millworks has been thumbing their nose at us far longer than that. They have not responded to the night sky, the latest night sky issue. We never got the core samples.
Pull the permit, make a motion.
Walmart.
They, they were denied their CO though for their new...
Yeah, but they're still there working. Big deal.
Were they denied the CO? I thought they got the CO. I thought Mr. Requena gave them the CO.
No, it was Paul Turner. Paul Turner was holding back the CO.
Yeah, but it's not stopping them.
Are they, are they in the space? I, I was wondering about that, cuz it looked like they were in the space.
Yeah, they're, they're working.
So if they, if they don't have a COA and they're operating in the space, that's a clear violation.
At $300 a day or something, yeah.
Okay, I, I guess maybe the next step on Master Millworks is to make, have the zoning enforcement officer go out there and see if they're in violation of the COA, and then we could still go pull the special permit.
So do we act on, on all three? Do we act on Wareham Retail Management, which encompasses Starbucks and Chipotle, and Master Millwork?
And Delta Dental, too.
And Delta Dental, that's right. You've got three businesses in that complex that are, that are technically in violation come December 3.
So on December 3rd, we take action?
By what? Sending them another letter?
No, by finding them. Having the, the building commissioner find them. Cuz that's what we told them.
We gave them, we did give them until 12/3.
Well, we'll give them the 12/3.
But we already agreed to that.
Let them hang themselves by, by not acting. So...
Mike, we're gonna do it this one.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
With all respect for Starbucks and Chipotle and that, when I came by tonight, there's a little backhoe out there, and they've ripped up the pad for the old dumpster area.
Oh, that, that's like today, they did that.
I know. Yesterday I went by there, and there was still the trash that they'd left after they pulled up the enclosure.
Yeah.
But today, apparently, they moved it in, and...
Okay, well, it's not just on the 3rd yet.
I'm assuming that they're gonna actively pursue that and get it switched around.
Well, perhaps not getting the license.
Exactly.
Yeah, back to action.
Yeah, that might, you know, do it, but at least there's something happening. I just wanted to say that.
I wasn't aware of that.
They know that they're out of business the 31st if they don't have that permit. And we can close them down earlier, but in fairness, give them to the 3rd, maybe.
Well, if they're...
If it wasn't since January, I'd be a little less hostile, but no letters, no letters, no response.
And all the time in the world to correct the problem.
Yeah. And now it's getting hard to get cement to set asphalt.
They had great weather through November. They could have poured cement.
Yep.
Any day.
All right, so...
So we'll wait till 12/3?
We'll wait till 12/3 and have a, have a look at what's going on.
All right.
And if there's active construction going on, then my suggestion would be we let them go till 12/31, and if they're not done, then they run the risk of no permit.
Substantial work.
Substantial.
Substantial work.
Well, we're meeting on the 12th anyway.
Your next meeting is on the 12th. Do you wanna wait until then to make any kind of action and see what happens on the 3rd, or do you wanna take a vote now?
No.
What action you wanna take after, on the 4th?
Well, I suggest we all go out there on the 3rd and see what the status is.
All right, I appreciate the input, Charlie, cuz I wasn't aware that they were...
I had been over there the other day, so this is like very recent.
It's today.
Yeah, today.
It happened today.
They know the meeting today.
Okay.
Somebody's gonna say something.
So we won't act on Wareham, Wareham Retail Management, but I think we should act on Master Millwork.
I agree. But I, I don't wanna wait till the next meeting.
No, I, I think...
I'm like, the 3rd is the deadline.
We can, the 3rd for who?
For Starbucks and Dunkin' Donuts. I mean, we said substantial work. I just don't...
Substantial work.
There is some asphalt work involved in moving this?
Yeah, asphalt and...
And they're closing down.
Because the plant's closed.
They're closing.
Yeah. Well, I mean, they're gonna hang themselves out to dry, you know, not being able to get, to get asphalt because they waited too long. I don't think it's gonna be an acceptable excuse.
Okay.
So why don't, let's, why don't we do this? Why don't we leave that till our next meeting? We can all, at, at our leisure, somewhere around the 3rd, go out, have a look, see what kind of progress is being made, if they are actively working. But in the interim, I'd like to ask, or entertain a motion to ask the planning office to request that the zoning enforcement officer make a visit to Master Millworks and see if they're occupying the space without a certificate of occupancy. And if so, then we'll take appropriate action.
Well, no, he should begin, he, he, if, if they're occupying without a COA, then he could take immediate action. He could put the red sticker on the wall at that moment.
But the only thing that's keeping them from getting their certificate of occupancy is addressing the night sky, the, the dark sky lighting, correct?
Have they done the landscaping? That the landscaping was done, you're satisfied with the filter thing in the back. The only thing we don't...
Beating the wall.
Yeah.
I think the lighting was the only real...
Well, yeah, and we, we agreed with Mr. Madden that the, the thickness of the asphalt is their problem. So...
Yeah, the, getting the cores now is...
Stupid, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You've agreed it, my letter said that my recommendation was you take no action on the condition of the asphalt, that it was strictly up to them because they...
Right, right. And if it fails, then?
It's on them.
It's on them.
Yep.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so then it's just the night sky issue.
Okay, so can we, Ken, can, can the planning office send that request to the zoning enforcement officer to make a visit to Master Millwork?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we need to vote on that, or is that just a general discussion?
We, we can vote on it if you want to.
Make it official. Okay, so I entertain a motion to request the planning office to ask the zoning enforcement officer to make a visit to Master Millworks to inspect whether or not they're occupying space that they do not have a certificate of occupancy for.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Sam Corbett, seconded by Carl Schultz. All in favor? Sherri?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Jane?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Carl?
Aye.
And chair vote aye. Board member comments?
I have several, so I'll go after.
You'll go last?
I will, yes.
Mike, do you have any comments? Sherri? Jane? You're opening it up. You know he's coming, right? Could have bought us a little bit of time.
If you're gonna force us to make comments, I'll make this comment. With respect to the decommissioning issue?
Yes.
There is a narrower inquiry that we could undertake, which is just to see what other municipalities are doing with respect to this issue, sort of above and beyond what you found out in the document that we received today.
Mm-hmm.
If you would like for me to do some work in that area, I'd be happy to.
Yeah, I think with your background, I think that's a perfect fit. That, that would be fabulous.
Okay.
Sam, comments?
You know, motion to adjourn is not debatable. Make it quick.
All right, I just, I think we need to begin, there are several open action items. One, I, I would like to recommend that we put on the agenda or for discussion forming the, the subcommittee to look at alternative energy and make recommendations on improvements to the bylaws. The select board didn't take action on that, but I think Ms. Quirk and I are feeling strongly about that. So that, in addition, we still owe Mr. Buckland a priority on bylaws that need to be updated and revised, and there's a ton of work, I think, that he posted, that we discussed last meeting, and I think he's looking for a priority and action on that. We need to not lose sight of that.
Mm-hmm.
We need to carry that as sort of a list or something and keep moving it forward.
All of them.
Yeah, well, they all do, but we gotta, gotta figure out which ones are, are the priority. I think we've identified...
Think more of what town meeting is willing to go through.
That's, that's the other issue. It's so, it's, it's hard for the residents to...
Yeah, well, and, and the tough part in doing it piecemeal is that it's all so interwoven.
Right. Okay, so that, I, my recommendation is at least we keep a list and keep it in our, in our...
If, if, one other option, if you think that there's too mu, too much to do in the bylaws, then let's, let's go through a wholesale revision of the bylaws then, and, and set this up as a longer-term, more complete revision of the zoning bylaws.
Well...
Dare I say, that would be my recommendation.
My God. Well, then I think that, that deserves some, some discussion, and, and I, and I think we have the perfect person to lead that charge.
Carl, how about it?
Do we wanna put that on the agenda?
No, but I, my recommendation is, is, is we, we need to keep Mr. Buckland's open list and deal with this.
Can we, can we work on these, Ken, as a workshop, as opposed to a public hearing setting?
Yeah, do you wanna do it as a, another meeting in December?
Well, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, well, I, so I just...
26th off anyway.
Yeah.
Maybe we can, we can set some time aside. And just strictly that.
Right. I just wanted to keep that in front of us because...
No, I agree, because what's gonna happen is the Springtown meeting's gonna be here, and we're gonna be unprepared again.
Right.
Yeah. No, I, I agree, wholeheartedly.
Okay.
So, either the... I'll leave it up to you guys, either the fifth or the nineteenth.
I'd say the nineteenth.
I'd agree.
Okay.
Okay, so the nineteenth?
Gives us a little bit of time.
Uh-huh, and that's all, it'll be strictly a workshop, strictly for the articles.
Okay, all right. The next thing I would like to keep in the forefront, and, and I need to follow up with Mr. Buckland, is we have, I don't remember how many, we're on the count of solar projects that are actually operational, but, but I used the list that you had given me, and I sent it back to you, that these, we have some solar projects that have been operational for quite a while, I don't know that we've ever gone back and revisited the decommissioning plans or reviewed the, the cost escalators or the conditions in the plans, and I don't even know if all of them have the right for review.
They don't, and some of the older ones, we didn't put an escalator in them, only in the more recent ones, the last four, four years or so that we've been doing the escalation, revision, updating the, the cost factors.
Okay, so none of those are probably ready for review?
Well, probably some of them are, actually.
Can we, can we get a list of the ones that are, and then a list of the ones upcoming?
Yeah, Shukran just finished last week.
So that we can prepare, you know, if we can prepare for it, and, and also give the proponents.
Heads up, yeah.
Heads up that it's coming.
And it's gonna be two hundred and seventy thousand megawatt, yeah.
Well, we, we should make sure that that starts getting out, that that's the scale that we think we need to look at.
And it seems that, that, did we ever answer the question about prevailing wage? Because if this is money that is held in case the town is in a position where they have to take over the decommissioning work, that's the whole point of this.
Right.
That was, I think that's, that's what the child document took into fact.
Then it's probably gonna end up being prevailing wage, and so that needs to be put, that, that's.
Well.
They took that into account, if you read that document.
They did, okay.
That, that was part of.
Well, Charlie did, but I think what we did is we assumed, for good or ill, that the hundred and twenty-five percent multiplier dealt with all of those, all of those unknowns. It may not be anywhere near enough.
Honestly, right now, I think twenty-five percent might be low.
Right.
Right, no, I'm saying, that was.
They're doing market rate, and then that twenty-five percent is supposed to cover it being prevailing wage, and escalation, and inflation, and a bunch of unknowns.
And that was the other thing that we discovered, I think at the last meeting, is the two percent yearly escalator to keep up with inflation is, is not, not adequate.
Not close.
Right.
That's, that's why these reviews are important, so the ones we've missed the boat on, we've missed the boat, keep our fingers crossed, they don't go under, they stay operational, and we never, we don't have to deal with it.
So, yeah, if you could get us that list, Ken, so that we can prepare for the, for, you know, the upcoming meetings and get them penciled in.
Right.
That would be good.
Okay, and did I have, I think, I, I'm just trying to keep things in, in the, in front of mind, I think that was, that was my last comment.
Okay, Sam, it's all you, man.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry, Charlie?
Just one comment on the prevailing, prevailing wage thing. You probably won't get an answer out of the Department of Labor's and Industry for this, for any particular project you've got here, because generally what happens is you submit a letter, at least this is the way it used to be, you submitted a letter telling them what your operation is gonna consist of, and the state then gives you a list of what the prevailing wages are for those particular types of labor and so forth.
Yeah.
But you probably could go on the site and find some comparable projects that would have those same sort of, you know, labor requirements listed to give you an idea as to what the rates are at that particular time. But don't remember, remember also that if you, for those that you do have the recurring review every five years, you could then look at what they prevailing wages are through labor and industries at that time, and if you need to set new numbers, you can do it on that basis. So you're not losing anything by setting a number now, if you've got that clause and they're reviewing.
Right, yeah, the review process is.
Yeah.
Labor and industry ought to be putting stuff, putting information out there that is available for reference, for, for estimating.
And there may be something on solar projects, too, I don't know.
But Charlie's absolutely right, that when you have a project, you apply for wage rates for that project, and I, I don't know if they hold your feet to the fire that the project is gonna happen, or whether you can apply for those wage rates for a hypothetical project.
I don't think you can apply for a hypothetical project, I think you have to have one specifically for them to issue.
That's what I don't remember.
But there may be something on their website, if they have one, where you could get some references of maybe other projects where they have issued that.
The Hoops them to do that.
Yeah, it gives you an idea as to where to look.
But we could then, if we make an improvement to the bylaw, or.
That's something that you.
Procedure, we could, we can increase the, the things that we look for in, in decommissioning